Good evening, everyone. Sorry we're starting a few minutes late. But I call and order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, December fourteenth, 2023, 6:00 PM. I'd like to invite Daniel Beard from Action Church. If you'll come forward, provide our invocation and then lead us in our pledge. If everyone will stand.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening, and amongst all the busyness and hustle, we have this meeting tonight with an agenda before the Council and the Mayor. We ask God that your blessing would be upon the decisions that are made. We ask God that you help and guide and bring wisdom to make all the right decisions. Father, God, this time of year where we're all busy and getting ready for Christmas, may our eyes be set on the most precious gift this time of year, your Son that you sent. We ask God blessings upon the city and the decisions that are made. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Haynes.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Tyler.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here. All right. The next item we have on the agenda is our milestone awards. This is where we recognize milestone service awards for our employees. We've got three in the month of November. We've got Chief Mike Williams, thirty years of service to our city. Also Billy Quintrell, thirty years of service with the city, both in the fire department. We appreciate your longevity. We know you've been here since the beginning of the fire department being incorporated into the city, and we appreciate that. Also, not to mention, also wanted to mention Scott Gilbert, five years of dedicated service as well. So we appreciate these milestone awards. They will be presented a check, a pin, and a certificate for their years of service. So thank you. The next item we have on the list, we have a special proclamation for Edgewood Baptist's one-hundred-year anniversary, and we have Dr. Dale Kidd and I believe Patrick McGlynn here. If they would come forward, and Council, if you'd like to come down, we will present them with this proclamation.
Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead.
It is our pleasure to present a proclamation to Edgewood Baptist Church. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas this commemoration of a hundredth anniversary, Edgewood Baptist Church remains as committed today as it was in 1923 to continue nurturing the faith in its members and share the gospel message of Jesus Christ with surrounding communities. And whereas the congregation was organized in 1923 by A.A. Pruitt in a one-room building at the edge of the woods in the Twenty-seventh Street of Chattanooga, Tennessee, and whereas in December 2008, Edgewood Baptist Church moved to 3604 Ringel Road at the intersection of Germantown Road, which was originally Kingwood Baptist Church and later Stanley Heights Baptist Church. And whereas Edgewood Baptist Church exists to meet the needs of its members and the community of East Ridge and Hamilton County to which they belong. And whereas members worship together as a community of believers and support one another's values and beliefs in the one true God. And whereas the vision of Edgewood Baptist is being the people of God, holy, hungry, helping, happy, healing, hearty, harmonic, and hopeful. And whereas, as we celebrate this milestone, we pause and give thanks, honor, and praise for the deep and abiding Christian commitment of those who in faith began this work, for all those who have given so unselfishly during these many years to see that the work of the church continues to grow and thrive. Whereas it is a pleasure to extend this expression of our esteem and best wishes to the members of the congregation on the memorable occasion of the hundredth anniversary. Therefore, we, by me, Mayor of the City of East Ridge, declare December seventeenth, 2023, Edgewood Baptist Church Day. Thank you. Congratulations. So if others, are there others here from?
I didn't even know this was happening.
Oh, this was happening?
No.
Okay. Well, now surprise then. So East Ridge Helping Neighbors, also known as East Ridge Neighbors Helping Neighbors in the community-based civic group that serves elderly and disabled neighbors in East Ridge. Whereas they're founded in 2019, local neighbors started meeting for breakfast almost weekly to discuss how they could help disabled and elderly citizens within the city. Whereas the focus of East Ridge Helping Neighbors is to help aid with the exterior repairs and yard cleaning for qualified applicants. And whereas East Ridge Helping Neighbors partnered with Action Church and is qualified as an action group so they may receive charitable funds to help with projects and also cover under the church's insurance while helping our neighbors. Whereas the City of East Ridge celebrates the efforts of East Ridge Helping Neighbors and commends the members that are serving our community by helping those who cannot always help themselves. Therefore, I, Mayor of the City of East Ridge, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December fourteenth, as East Ridge Neighbors' Day. Thank you very much. Thank you. Nope. So now, at this point, I would like to ask, if you'll come forward, they have a presentation that they would like to present to the city, City Council, and also to our city library. So Ms. Weaver, if you'll come forward.
I'm Louis Quinn Gate, and I am a member of the Judge David Campbell Chapter of N.S.V.A.R. and he is one of our chapter members and East Ridge resident, Patty Guglo. We are, as a state organization, recognizing the fiftieth anniversary of the poem "Oh, Tennessee, my Tennessee." It was written by Tennessean naval admiral William Porter Lawrence. It was composed by him during his captivity in Hanoi as a prisoner of the war during the Vietnam War. Lawrence's aircraft was shot down during the bombing on and his co-police and keeper captured. Lawrence was imprisoned from 1967 until his release in 1973. He was a prisoner at the time or end of Hanoi Hilton in Hanoi Bay. During his captivity, he composed a poem in his head. Then he wrote a small piece of the sky he could see from his cell, reminding him of the home of his Tennessee. When he was released, he wrote the poem down and presented it to Governor Winfield Dunn. The same year that Tennessee State Legislature adopted the poem "Oh, Tennessee, my Tennessee" as the official state poem. The author received many honors after he returned to service, including having a U.S. naval destroyer named after him. The U.S. William P. Lawrence is in service now. We are proud to donate a copy of this poem that has been illustrated by more of our D.R.R. dollars to the library and to the Navy.
On behalf of the Council, of the city, and the citizens, we appreciate this very much. It means a lot, and this will be displayed here at City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We need some place?
Yes.
So the next item is.
I'm Shawna Skiles. I'm our Director of Parks and Rec. I want to start, you're awesome. I want to start our parade off by recognizing our grand marshal this year, which was Lloyd Chadwick. If you'll come on up, sir.
You got the place for this?
This is what the kids care, Jeffrey, go run for it.
So this year, we had two third-place winners, so I'm going to call it one of them first, which was our East Ridge Animal Services. And our next third-place winner was Southern Bookkeeping.
Hayrow.
Hayrow and Bookkeeping. Are they here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. this year. So this year, in the education piece, we had one first, and then we had two people tie for second. So the first, second-place winner was Belvoir Christian Academy. Our next second-place winner was East Ridge High School, J.R.O.T.C. For our first-place winner, and I really appreciate you guys coming out and traveling to us. Y'all were phenomenal. You did a great job. And that was the Tanner Marching Band. They're going to be down front. No, they're going to be down front. They're going to be up here. So if we can squeeze in, David, only squeeze in.
You want to take a picture?
Close your heels up forward, please.
Mark can get in the picture. Come on in. Come on in. Yeah, we're good. Come on, Mark.
The idea is to get the two, move that out of the way, the seal a little bit, put it more on the center of you. I want the two seals. Look at that seal here, you're blocking it. I don't like the mayor's name or that seal or the upper seal. We do a month, what's called a monthly storyboard. We submit it to the Army, and it is our intent to submit this picture to the Army.
Oh, thank you. Awesome.
We don't know, so hopefully you understand you're giving up your rights to a photo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. They'll just put you on tonight.
All right. The next item is consent agenda. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes of the November ninth, 2023 council meeting, and the October 2023 financial report. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Haynes and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion? See nothing. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Consent agenda approved. We'll move to item five, communications from citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen resident to come forward, address the council if they have any questions, concerns, accolades. No one has signed in, but if there's anyone in the audience, you have this opportunity to come forward now, and you'll have up to five minutes. I don't see anyone, so I will now move to the next item, which is communication of council members. I'll show it on this side. Councilmember Cagle.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's, and hope everybody had a grand Thanksgiving. And also, I'd like to ask a question to the city manager that been asked me a lot this week. Which side are we on picking up leaves?
I'll get to that.
Well, I'm through.
I have that on my report.
Okay, I'm through.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Haynes.
I'd like to say the same thing. Merry Christmas to everybody and looking forward to a really successful and prosperous 2024 for the City of East Ridge.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Witt.
I too want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to 2024.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyler.
I will echo the sentiments of the rest of the council. Merry Christmas, everybody, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mine's usually not that short. But so I would like to go back and mention that we had a groundbreaking on December the fifth at 1:30 for our animal shelter. Very excited about this project. I believe we had, it's going to be 180 days. We're looking at, without any delays with weather, we're looking at around July, end of June, first of July, for this to be open. So we're very excited about that. Also, as you saw, we had the Christmas Parade Awards, so we had an amazing parade. I want to thank the city staff and all the volunteers, the tremendous amount of work they put in to make this successful. Every year, every year it gets better and it gets bigger, so it's amazing. Also, I would like to thank the, we had on the 22nd, we had our first community Thanksgiving, and it was a great event. We had, it was a great lunch. It was served. There were food bags. There was boxes available and shoes and coats for individuals to take home. I'd like to thank all the sponsors, all the volunteer, city employees, and the community members that made this event possible. It was a, it was a great event, and so thank everyone that was involved in that. Also, I'd like to mention on the eighth of February, we had, we were awarded a check from TDEC, Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, for, and so they drove up to Henry Horton State Park to receive this check. Originally, we were awarded $400,000 from LPRF, Local Parks and Recreation Funding. We also requested additional $200,000, so we were approved for a total of $600,000 that we received from the state of Tennessee. This grant's going to be utilized in construction and renovation costs of our community center. So I'd like to thank Shawna Skiles, Cameron McAllister, and Hannah Spear for going up, receiving that, and all the hard work, along with staff here, for all their hard work in getting that secured and winning that, that grant money. Kind of upcoming, but you know, it's kind of competing, so I'm wondering if they had more people over there than we have over here, but we had, Miss Claus was having cookies with Miss Claus this evening from 6:00 to 7:30. So kind of jealous I couldn't sneak over there and get some, some cookies, but that was going on tonight, so thanks again for the community center for doing that. Some of the things I want to also mention about Parks and Rec, they had, they started their indoor soccer, and they've had an amazing participation. They've actually went, exceeded additional 400 this year in indoor soccer for the number of youth. We're now up over 1,800 youth that are participating in the winter soccer. About the same amount for adults, about the same amount as we had in '22. We've got an increase in the youth basketball. So kudos to them for putting together a great program and getting more participation. You going to talk about the bridge work as well, I-24?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So like the other council, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and blessed New Year. We're excited what's going on in East Ridge, and we're expecting '24 to be just as good or even better. So I'll hand it now to Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Talk first on the leaf pickup. We're halfway through our second round. On the north side of Ringel Road, we are in the vicinity of Spring Creek, and we are moving west. On the south side of Ringel Road, we're in the Green Lakes area, and we're moving east. So within the next several weeks, we'll be done with the second round, and then we'll go through again for a third round and possibly fourth round. All depends on the weather and depends on how much weeds we have out there. Second item I want to talk to, talk about is the progress report on the Ringel Road. Work continues on the north side by our contractor, Tally Construction, between Jack's Restaurant and McBryan Road. They're getting involved with the installation of storm drains line, storm drainage lines and drainage structures. It's past Monday, December 11th, they started pouring concrete. They were out there yesterday and today, and hopefully be here tomorrow, doing the curb, gutter, and driveway approaches, not the sidewalks yet, the curb and gutters and the driveway approaches from all businesses, from McBryan Road west to Jack's Restaurant. And we'll do the concrete pours, weather permitting. We'll do this for the next two weeks, up until the 22nd of December, and then work will come to a halt until January 2nd. They're taking the week of Christmas off, and they'll be back to work on the January 22nd. And depending on January 2nd, 2024, and weather permitting, we hopefully will get to the point where we can start pouring the concrete for the sidewalks. Over the next two weeks, already covered that one, excuse me. Okay, the retaining wall is on the agenda tonight to talk a little bit about that. We're hoping to start that construction at the beginning of the year. All in all, we hope to be, have Ringel Road open to two lanes westbound from McBryan to Belvoir in mid-January. That's what we're pushing for right now. Can hardly wait till that, that occurs. I know it's been a very much inconvenience for everybody out there in the audience, as well as everybody up here in the dais. And the last thing I want to, this item I want to touch base on is the traffic advisory. This is from TDOT noting, "Bridge construction prompts nightly closures." This is, uh, from TDOT noting, "Bridge construction prompts nightly closures on I twenty-four in Hamilton County." Starting last night, from nine until six, they're doing what is called rolling roadblocks on I twenty-four to stop traffic for up to thirty minutes on a lane and then open it back up and let traffic through for another thirty minutes and then close it down. What they're doing is putting in the I-beams across I twenty-four for the McBrian and more bridges. I know it's a lot of inconvenience, however, we pushed to have both of these bridges done at the same time so that we could get this work done quicker. They were originally looking at doing one bridge one year, opening it up and do the next bridge the following year and then opening it up. We look into two years, we got them to, to push and, and get this design build project hopefully done in two years, so we are pushing on that one. These are between the hours of nine and six, nine PM and six AM, so if you're out there driving after nine o'clock PM, this is five or six days a week, no, I'm sorry, this is, we, seven days a week, they'll be doing this around the clock. You may want to look at another route to go so you don't get stuck in that traffic. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we're hoping those bridges will be done as anticipated within a year. We also had concerns with all the, the traffic, especially truck traffic jumping off and trying to run up Ringel Road and try to go through the tunnel, so we've actually, um, engaged TDOT about that, so if we can get some kind of portable signage out there. Uh, we said anticipated that on the front end, but we've actually requested that on the back end. So, I think he's going to look at trying to get something out there, maybe the next go-around possibly. He hadn't committed, but we're, we're asking for it.
Yeah, we've asked, we have formally asked for it and there, it's under consideration right now.
Thank you, sir. All right, we don't have any old business, so we'll move into new business, so item A, resolution number three four seven four.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council approving an appointment by Mayor Williams to the East Ridge Library Board.
Thanks, sir. I would like to reappoint Dr. Jessica Crowe, um, to the Library Board. Uh, she has previously served, she started filling in for a vacancy and, uh, has served well, and I'm honored to reappoint her. So I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four seven four.
I make a motion to approve resolution three four seven four.
Second.
Have motion to approve by Councilman Tyler and a second by Vice Mayor Haynes. Do we have any discussion? See nothing, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution three four seven four passed. Thank you for your service and continued service. We'll move to item B, resolution number three four seven five.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council approving an appointment to the East Ridge Library Board.
Thank you, sir. Count, this is a council appointment, so council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four seven five for the appointment.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Ginny Tyler, she's serving there now. To appoint.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Haynes for the reappointment of Ginny Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
Uh, I spoke to Mrs. Tyler earlier this evening, she's honored to serve again.
Thank you, sir. All right, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Abstain.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number three four seven five passed. We'll move to item C, resolution number three four seven six.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council approving a letter agreement, letter agreement with Victus Advisors to perform a sports facility feasibility study related to potential expansion and/or enhancements at Camp Jordan.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir, thank you. The mayor and the city council heard presentations on October fifth, two thousand twenty-three from the firms of the sports facilities companies, Uden Partners and Loose Design and Victus Advisors LLC for the purpose of undertaking a sports facility feasibility study for Camp Jordan Park. At the regular business meeting of October twenty-sixth, city council selected the firm of Victus to perform this study. Attached into your agenda, you have a letter agreement between Victus Advisors and the city of East Ridge, which outlines the terms and conditions for Victus to provide East Ridge with a sports facility feasibility study for the potential and/or enhancement of indoor and outdoor facilities located at Camp Jordan Park. I will, do want to point out, under phase one, section A of this letter agreement, they reference what is called a project steering committee. That project steering committee refers to the contact persons that will be on the city side, have conversations about the scheduling, uh, everything else that goes along with this study, with Victus Advisors consultants. Those individuals are Shawna Skiles and myself, so we are what is called the project steering committee. If anybody has any questions or concerns about the, uh, proposed consultant letter agreement? I'm open.
Price.
The price is seventy-five thousand dollars. It'll take fourteen weeks to get done. The county has, just, has, is it twenty or twenty-five?
Twenty-five, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar commitment.
Twenty-five thousand dollars to help fund it, so our share will be fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, I will entertain a motion for resolution number three four seven six.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four seven six.
Second.
Have motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
The county's money's not guaranteed yet, it's, it's
We sent an invoice, have we received the check?
No.
Okay.
We will have to pay the, I'm sure we'll have to pay it, tell them we paid it and then they give us the money.
Yeah, but, um,
It would be a reimbursement back to the city.
So, but, yes, Mayor Womp agreed to that, he actually asked us to go ahead and send an invoice over for earmarking it and that was all been done. Any other questions? Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes, resolution number three four seven six. Approved, we'll move to item D, resolution number three four seven seven.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council declaring official intent for reimbursement of certain capital expenditures for Camp Jordan Phase Three and the multipurpose pavilion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Yes, we're moving forward with undertaking both of these, uh, infrastructure projects. One is the multipurpose pavilion project, which we have estimated six point four million dollars, and the second is Camp Jordan Park Phase Three improvements at a cost of one point five million respectively. We'd like to bundle these two projects at a seven point nine million dollar, uh, bond issue. Now is not the time to go out for a bond issue, so we're looking at getting this reimbursement resolution adopted that would allow us to spend money, uh, on these two projects, associated with these two projects, and be reimbursed from the proceeds of the bond issue if and when, when we go through the bond issue. Talked to our financial advisors today. We're not so sure January's going to be a good month, but as long as we get the money that we can pay and get reimbursed, we're probably looking at possibly in April or May, closing of a bond issue. And then go from there. But this will allow us to spend money on these two projects and then reimburse ourselves when, from the proceeds of the bond issue, when we close.
Thank you, sir, and I will note that both of these items are also border region reimbursement, so they can be expensed, border region.
Yes.
All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four seven seven.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four seven seven.
Second.
Have motion to approve by Vice Mayor Haynes and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, it says here that, uh, border region's going to be put on a pavilion and the hotel motel is going to take care of Camp Jordan.
We can do either one.
The one.
I just
Yeah, you're, you're correct, we could do, we could do either one. If we have the, if we have the, uh, border region proceeds, we could do the pavilion, but we certainly are looking at our hotel motel tax increasing to the point where we'll be able to afford it that way, too.
All right, I got one more.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it says here six point, I mean, seven point nine million.
Six point, yeah, seven point nine, that'd be six point
Total. Okay, and over here in the resolution, something mentioned about eight, eight point three million, uh, i- is that the interest included in that eight point three million or is that in section C?
Uh, that should be in the resolution, that should be seven point nine million in the reso, resolution. That's a typo. Thank you. It should be seven point nine million dollars in the resolution.
Get that updated?
Not expected to exceed, exceed seven point nine million, I'm only asking what I need for this project.
Yeah, well, I just seen that here and I want to get it clarified, I thought it, I thought it might have been the interest or something y'all had figured in, okay.
This would be, yeah, this is the principal that we would be obtaining.
Thank you, sir, anything else?
No.
Anyone else? I see no one, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Need to change the, uh, in the resolution? Be in the resolution from eight point three to seven point nine?
Yes, sir.
I want to make that motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-four seventy-seven with the amendment, we strike out eight point three million and include seven point nine million not to exceed.
I second the amendment.
All right, we have a amended, um, motion by Councilmember Cagle and a second by Councilmember Tyler to amend the wording of eight point three million to seven point nine on the resolution. Is there any discussion on this item? See nothing, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. So now we'll go back in, we'll actually now vote on the actual, uh, approved motion at the beginning. So is there any discussion with that? See nothing, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution three four seven seven approved and the amendment approved. We'll move to item E, resolution number three four seven eight.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council awarding a bid for the installation of a traffic signal strain pole at the intersection of Ringel Road and John Ross Road as part of the multimodal project.
Sir, Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I want to point out that this is for the construction and installation of a traffic strain pole. We've already approved the acquisition of the strain pole at a previous meeting back in September fourteenth. Strain pole at a cost of thirteen thousand one forty-nine, that's been ordered, because we're talking about a twenty-two week, uh, time limit to, for the strain pole to come in. Uh, once it does come in, uh, we need to have a contractor construct and install that strain pole. The location, front of Brooms Auto on Ringel Road. We sent out the, uh, RF, RFPs on this to five contractors, only one received. That was from Napco in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine forty-two fifty, fifty cents. Napco has done various work for us, they did the complete traffic signalization at the intersection of I seventy-five and Ringel Road back on the reconfiguration done in two thousand and seventeen. Did a great job on that, they've been working with the city for years. So, it's recommended by city staff, Mike Alley, myself, as well as Steve Meyer, who was a traffic engineer, to award this bid to Napco Electric in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four seven eight.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four seven eight.
Second.
Have motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Tyler, do we have any discussion? See nothing, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to the next item, resolution number three four seven nine.
A resolution of the East A resolution of the East Ridge City Council awarding a bid for the Max Smith Road Widening and Improvements Project to Adams Construction Contracting LLC.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor, I do have, uh, Jeff Sykes, our engineer from ASA Engineer, and ASA Engineering here. If anyone has any specific questions about this project, we've been back and forth on this, uh, on the agenda over this past several months. We're looking at this North Max Smith widening project to be divided into two phases. The first phase is the bid that we received. That would be to construct North Max Smith Road widening from Ringel Road to the north property line of the Fairfield Inn and Suites, which would be the south property line of the retirement center. This would be per the design plans that were dated January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We would stop the project at that point. Number two, we would construct the drainage system along the east side of Max Smith Road, that's the side where Cracker Barrel exists and Budgetelle exists, to the end of the property line of the Budgetelle before we get to the curve in the road. Next item under phase one would be build a two-lane roadway from the south property line of the Budgetelle to the north property line of the Budgetelle within the city's existing right-of-way. That contained at phase one, we received three bids ranging from two point three million to four point nine million. Adams Contracting LLC bid was the lowest at two million three hundred thirty-five thousand and six hundred forty-three dollars. I will mention that phase two, that would be constructed by the city when the city is able to obtain the necessary right-of-way acquisition to be able to continue the roadway to the front gate of the Gateway Development. That's where CHI Memorial Stadium is located. That is not part of, that's phase two, we're only looking at this time for phase one. So, I'm asking the council for your consideration to award a bid to Adams Contracting, who's been deemed to be the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of two million three hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred forty-three dollars. When this bid is, if this bid is awarded tonight, we'll get all the paperwork with Adams taken care of. We don't look into start construction until March, March first. We do have some, uh, EPB lines, power lines, as well as some gas lines that need to be taken care of, and that would be done in January and February.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four seven nine.
I make a motion to approve resolution three four seven nine.
Have motion to approve by Councilmember Tyler and a second by Vice Mayor Haynes, do we have any discussion? I don't have a discussion, but I will remind council that we were granted a million dollars toward this project for both entrances from the county as well, so there'll be a million dollars reimbursed back after we expend, um, money on this project. All right, I see no discussion, roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes, resolution number three four seven nine passed, we'll move to item G, resolution number three four eight zero, yes, sir.
Sorry. Could we have, could we be able to move P up? Item P, that deals with, uh, the change order for Ringel Road since Jeff is here and get him on his way. A little under the weather.
All right, we will, we'll move item P, resolution number three four eight nine forward. Great, sir.
A resolution of the city council for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to approve change order request number four from Tally Construction, Inc., in regard to the Ringel Road multimodal roadway project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller or Mr. Sox?
If you want to handle. Uh, I can, uh, Jeff Sykes, uh, ASA Engineering. Uh, this is a change order, uh, that is, uh, basically to construct a retaining wall. Uh, this would be right across from the Save-A-Lot where that slot, or that slope comes down to the edge of the road. Uh, during the design, it was our intent to avoid building the retaining wall, it was kind of a, we, we knew that building a retaining wall would prevent, uh, you know, future maintenance with some of the material coming down, but it wasn't necessarily of the material coming down, but it wasn't necessary from a stability perspective. Uh, after, uh, going to construction and talking with Tally, we had a couple of instances where, uh, you know, we had some apparent movement on the slope, and, and it was decided that by them digging, uh, the storm sewer line and undermining that, that it may be necessary to do it for safety purposes as well as, uh, long-term maintenance. Uh, so, uh, we took a proposal, uh, we, we designed the retaining wall, took a proposal from Tally, uh, we compared that with T-Dot statewide averages. Uh, their, uh, unit price comes in lower than what the statewide averages are, uh, so we would recommend approval to, to go ahead and proceed to build it.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four eight nine.
Make a motion to approve resolution number three four eight nine.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Witt, and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
See the last sentence in this thing, it says, we might be able to be reimbursed from the state?
Yes. We're hoping.
We're gonna turn it in, uh, with some other items, uh, to the state for reimbursement. Uh, we don't know if we'll get reimbursed for it, but we're gonna make that effort.
What, uh, what is the length? No, it's five foot high. How long, what's the width, or the length of it? Do you know?
I believe I got stations written on there, possibly. Um, I, I'll be honest with you, Mayor, I don't know. Uh, it came out to, it was a ninety-one, ninety-seven dollars a square foot?
Yeah, our, our, yeah.
I apologize, Mayor. I didn't have enough information with me.
Oh, you got it?
Yep, we're talking, uh, ninety-five dollars and eleven, ninety-five dollars and eleven cents a square foot, and we are talking about almost seven hundred and ninety-three square feet total.
Okay, I give me do the math?
Seven point five times ninety-five dollars and eleven cents. Comes out to seventy-five thousand four sixty-nine seventy-eight.
So seventy, seventy-five, four seventy-seven, how many feet? I mean?
We don't have the feet. It's ninety.
That's what we're trying to determine.
I think.
So seven hundred ninety, uh, if you divide that by five, if it's an average of five foot high, then it should give you the length.
Fifteen eighty? Fifty-eight, the decimal, one fifty-eight, okay. Just curious. Sound about right?
And, and it's a property that.
It does, I'm trying to read this, but I, I need, I need.
It's all right.
And it's a property. We did look at additional right-of-way acquisition there, um, but it wasn't possible to do that. Uh, so we, we wanted to be able to go back, but if you've seen that slope, it, it goes all the way up. It's, it's, it's pretty steep. Um, but we did look at right-of-way acquisition as a, as a potential offset, but it's not possible.
Okay. All right, thank you all. No other discussion. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Merry Christmas. All right, we'll move back up to item G, resolution number three four eight zero.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council authorizing participation by the City of East Ridge in the United States General Services Administration Purchasing Program.
Cool.
Just another purchasing, uh, program we need to be in, and they'll be with the federal government, and they'll be purchasing special items for this, uh, for the police department.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four eight zero.
I make a motion to approve resolution three four eight zero.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Tyler, and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number three four eight zero passed. We'll move to item H, resolution number three four eight one.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase ten laser aiming modules from ADS through the U.S. General Services Administration.
Thank you, sir. Chief Heseltine?
Uh, Mayor Council, these, uh, aiming modules will be used primarily by our special weapons and tactics team. Uh, they work with the, um, night vision goggles that are later on. Uh, main thing of this is that these will be funded by the Violent Crime Intervention Fund grant, uh, that was, uh, approved earlier by the council.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four eight one.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four eight one. Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Witt, and a second by Vice Mayor Haynes. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution three four eight one passed. We'll move to item I, resolution number three four eight two.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase a forensic laser scanning scanner package from Hexagon through the U.S. General Services Administration.
Thank you, sir. Chief Heseltine?
Mayor Council, this too is funded by the Violent Crime Intervention Fund. Uh, this, uh, laser scanner effectively creates a three-D rendering of the scene, so we can use it, uh, a lot with, uh, crime scenes and that stuff.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three eight four?
I make a res- I make a.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Three four eight two, let me get that corrected. I'm sorry.
Help me for a second there. Uh, I make a motion to approve resolution three four eight two.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Tyler, and a second by Vice Mayor Haynes. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number three four eight two approved. We'll move to item J, resolution number three four eight three.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase eleven PVS fourteen night vision systems from Night Vision Devices, Inc., the U.S. General Services Administration.
Thank you, sir. Chief Heseltine?
Again.
You're on Christmas list here, don't you?
Thank you all for this, by the way. Uh, yes, it, these are, uh, night vision, uh, systems with mounts that will, again, be, uh, from the Violent Crime Intervention Fund that was, uh, approved earlier. Uh, so this will be used by the SWAT team, includes the, uh, mounting, uh, apparatus for the helmets.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four eight three.
Make a motion to for resolution number three four eight three.
Second.
Motion to approve, Vice Mayor Haynes, and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
I've got one, it's just for me personally, actually, because, uh, he's ordering ten laser aiming, but then he's ordering eleven night vision, and you stated these work together. So could you explain how they work together to a layman?
We, we actually don't have ten on our SWAT, SWAT team, and they're interchangeable between. Uh, so we'll have more laser mounts versus, say, if you have a perimeter team or anything like that. So we can, um, and, and plus, if nothing else, it gives us one more of the aiming devices as a backup if it fails.
The aiming device bolts on to the gun, and the night vision bolts on?
Night vision will actually go on the helmets.
Okay.
Uh, and it'll swing down over the, for the eyes, so.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Resolution number three four eight three approved. We'll move to item K, resolution number three four eight four.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Holland and Knight LLP to act as Government Affairs Council to the City of East Ridge in regard to matters before the Tennessee General Assembly.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Yes, uh, the City of East Ridge has contracted to professional services of Nicole Watson, Holland and Knight, as our lobbyist to assist us in issues and matters before the Tennessee General Assembly, as well as state agencies for the past six or seven years. And you have before us an engagement letter to contractor services, again, from Holland and Knight, Nicole Watson, for the period, uh, calendar year two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four eight four.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four eight four.
Second.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Haynes, and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, this, two thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars, is that per month?
Yes, sir.
Per month, okay. Then, it's plus expenses on top of that?
No. No expenses on top of that.
Wish I'd marked that in here.
Currently, we're paying her two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars a month now.
Flat monthly rate, is that in here?
Yes, that's what she, David, we're engaging this for.
Has it in the letter, engagement letter?
Well, I was reading over here, I think it's fees and billing.
Says what?
In the fees and billing part of this contract, uh... They, uh, talking about assigning lawyers at the low, lowest hourly rate, paperwork.
That's the standard language, but it's my.
Okay, so, so we're not gonna.
We, all us to define it, because we pay a flat fee.
Yes, we pay about flat fee.
Okay.
Flat monthly fee, and that takes care of all.
Okay.
Councilmember Cagle, are, are you good, or are you looking for something else?
I'm through, I'm through.
Okay.
Just writing down what I put.
Okay.
Yeah, a- a- actually, if you look at their, the letter that they sent in, Holland and Knight, is their engagement, which is a flat monthly rate, and that's what we're approving. All this.
Yeah, it says here in the contract that they, uh, will agree with their clients to perform services on a fixed fee or other basis.
This is for flat monthly fee.
All right, no other questions? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number three eight four passed. We'll move to item L, resolution number three four eight five.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase eight two thousand twenty-three Ford interceptor sport utility vehicles from Lonnie Cobb Ford to the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing number two zero nine pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated twelve dash three dash one two zero one B.
Thank you, sir. Chief Heseltine?
Mayor Council, this purchase was approved in the budget. Uh, it's for seven general use patrol vehicles and one specialized K-9 unit.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three eight five, three four eight five.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four eight five.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Witt, and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion?
I know these are gonna be put in next year's budget.
I'm sorry?
These are gonna be put in next year's budget.
This budget. These, these were approved in the budget, and we're, the cars are just now getting into where we can buy them.
Oh, okay, all right.
Are these coming in, in budget, or? They're actually a little under budget. Now, just, yes, they're under budget this year. We've been told to expect an increase next year. Significant.
Do you have any idea of, uh, expectation of coming in?
Uh, I think we originally budgeted around, um...
No, arrival, we order on.
Arrival.
Arrival, sorry.
My understanding is they're actually working. We're in desperate need of the K-9 unit. They're actually, uh, putting that together now. We're hoping to get that next week, and hopefully receive the rest of them sometime in January.
Oh, cool. All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number three four eight five approved. We'll move to item.
Thank you.
M, thank you. Resolution number three four eight six.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council approving a termination of use restrictions in reversionary interest as to specific property relating to property located at six zero zero one Gaston Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Mark, you want? Yeah, I, I can take this, and I think this gentleman here, this, this is, um, got a little bit of history to it, but I can give you all the, the rundown. Uh, back in nineteen seventy-one, uh, there was a tract of about, uh, just under seventeen acres, uh, there by the hospital, which is now the, the Parkerage Hospital, was conveyed from the City of East Ridge to the East Ridge General Hospital. And at the time of that conveyance, the city itself put in the deed, which that deed's recorded at Book two thousand, page seventy-eight, a restriction in there that the property would, could only be used for the purpose of general hospital, medical center, or other sort of healthcare provider type offices. Uh, portions of that property were, were transferred over, um, through a series of transactions in which ca- in, and actually in two thousand six, uh, on the northern section of this, uh, Park Ridge area at nine twenty-nine Spring Creek, you had, um, uh, give or take about four acres up there that had the City of East Ridge remove the reverter, the reversion language in two thousand six. We found that, uh, Mr. Howell found that, uh, earlier today. And what is being requested now, we're now at the six, six thousand and one, uh, address of Gaston Avenue, and this is a set of properties here that has gone through a series of rezonings, most recently, I want to say, last, uh, November, I think it was, give or take.
Yes.
And I think what happened is, once they started doing some title work, there was a discovery of this, this property still having a reversion, and so their title agency, I'm assuming when it came back on the title commitments, it was identified that, hey, this property may still have that reversionary language in there. And so the, the owners here, the developers, are asking that the city, consistent with the previous approvals for the rezone the property for these, the apartments, go ahead and also vote to terminate the reversion language as it relates to the six thousand one Gaston Avenue. This is possible by this body because the original source of the reversion is the City of East Ridge, and it's the same body here that can now remove that. Um, if you all approve this resolution here, you're approving what is identified as a termination of use restrictions and reversionary interest as to the specific property, which in this case is the six thousand one Gaston Avenue. Yeah, should I, do you have anything else?
That's exactly what we were gonna say.
Thank you, sir. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three four eight six.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three four eight six.
Second.
We have motion to approve by Councilmember Witt, and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Resolution number three four eight six approved.
Very much Merry Christmas. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. We'll move to item N, resolution number three four eight seven.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council approving addendums to the interlocal agreement stated June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, for the city, for the city to provide fire and police services to the City of Ridgeline.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Uh, City of East Ridge entered into a, an agreement with the City of Ridgeline under date of June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. One of the agreements was to provide police protection services to Ridgeline. Second agreement was to provide fire protection services to Ridgeline. They're basically the same wording in both, uh, of the agreements. Looking at the cost of service in the sections in both of these agreements, it states, uh, we agreed to a four percent increase in the cost of service, service for year two, which would have been fiscal year July one to June thirtieth of two thousand, I'm sorry, July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and a four percent increase in the cost of services for year. And a four percent increase in the cost of services for year three, which was what we're in now, July first, two thousand twenty-three to July thirtieth, two twenty, two thousand twenty-four. There's no provision in this contract that says an increase in the cost of services for fiscal year after July first, two thousand twenty-four. This contract renews itself automatically every fiscal year, and since there was no provision for a cost of service increase after June thirtieth to two thousand twenty-four, I met with the mayor of Ridgeline and said, hey, listen, we either are looking to terminate the agreement, or I want to see a cost of living for July first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two twenty, two thousand twenty-five. That's what this addendum before you, it contains. If this is approved, it would provide for a four percent increase to Ridgeline on the police protection services, as well as the fire protection services for fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-three. No, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. From July first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three, four, eight, seven.
Make a motion to approve resolution number three, four, eight, seven.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Haynes and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
As always. I've sat down and figured up the, that we're supposed to go over there one time every six hours.
One time every, every shift?
Shift.
We're on twelve-hour shifts.
The way I read it over here, it was two times per twelve-hour shifts.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
So. You say that four times, three hundred and sixty-five, that comes up to fourteen hundred and sixty hours over there. If, if you take an hour over an hour, but you know, hour going over our back each trip, so that's four hours, per twenty-four hours, or I can break it down into thirty minutes per trip, comes up to seven hundred and thirty hours, plus the cost of hourly wages for the police, and then we had sixty-nine calls over there for last year. And so that comes up, and I don't know, I asked the chief, and he says he sends one policeman over there, and some of the calls take hours, some take longer. But personally, I don't, I think we need to reevaluate the cost per trips over there, and because we were collecting thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, we went up to thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three on the fire, and it went up from seventy-four thousand, one to eighty thousand, one, so which is just a little over six thousand dollars a year. Cost of cars, cost of this, and I don't know how much time we've got with detectives over there, and I don't know how much time we've got downtown, but I'd like to see what it cost us per trip over there and back and everything before we actually pass this four percent increase, because we've had two substantial salary increases to our police, so, and our, and our firehouse, and I, the firehouse is, to me, is, I've got a question about that, but personally, I'd like to see us get a cost on what it costs for each call to go over there. When we send a fire department over there, we send a, what, three hundred thousand dollar fire equipment with how many men, Mike, three, four? So, and they're over there for an hour for a heart attack, overdose? I mean, it don't take long to eat up two thousand, seven hundred dollars a year, send a fire apparatus over there, and, and I feel the same about the police department, so I'd just like to, because I don't know who this gentleman is, Adam Marther, he's the one that gave us the trip documents here, telling us how many we had over there and how many, what the calls.
The police department.
Okay, so, I did, I just think we're not charging enough. Of course, I, I think that every time their contract comes up, but.
Right.
Sit down and figure it, I, I just don't think we're charging enough. And then another thing about the fire department, whenever we hired the, or contracted Hampton County to be our ambulance service, and I notice in fire protection here, EMS service, is that just our fire department going over there, or is that Hampton County going with them?
Hampton Cap, chief, you want to address that?
Apparently, if we respond over there on an EMS call that's due to a, either one ambulance is coming from out of district and has a ten-minute or longer response to that address, we'll respond for responders over there to provide EMS until ambulance gets there. If it's a true ALS call, advanced life support via heart attack, or a true life-threatening call, we respond on all those calls to the city of Ridgeline. Other than that, if it's a sick call, or a call similar to that, they'll respond. We respond also to accidents, accidents on Shalford Road, accidents on the road inside the city of Ridgeline. Our call load has decreased in EMS responses. We do still respond over there for citizen assists, which are lift assists and stuff of that, that nature, or due to the age of, of some of the citizens over there, as well as the city of East Ridge, we're going on a lot, a lot of those type of calls currently. So. As far as fires, we have a couple of vehicle fires, we have some brush fires, we have some other calls of that nature, as well as I provided Mr. Miller with that information. So we would have to break those calls down and look at what apparatus responds, fuel hours, time spent there, and returning, so that, that's something we would have to look at, if that's a question that comes up from council. Yeah, I just noticed we had twelve calls total from last year, what I've got here. I think it's actually for about nine months.
That's currently at the present time.
Yeah, all right. So with the apparatus and the number of men we got going over there, I'd say just like November here, we had four calls, so that.
If those are EMS.
Four times with three or four people, times our hourly wages, it'll eat up at two thousand, seven hundred dollars in a heartbeat, so. Yes, sir, if it's an EMS call, we respond to a first responder vehicle over there, which is typically our Explorer, so it's no different than a patrol vehicle going over there. However, if that is on another call, then the engine company will respond. If it's a fire-related call, an engine company, a battalion chief would respond. If it's a wreck, an engine and battalion chief would respond. However, during the current time present, right now, we have an agreement with Chattanooga because of the interstate, okay? We have a dual response on the interstate areas. We have land on the other side of the interstate, Chattanooga's sending apparatus to assist us, so it's not slowing our response times down, as well as we are doing the same for them on this side, during this agreement, during the construction phase of I-24. So on any fire-related call currently in the city of Ridgeline, Chattanooga's responding an engine company, as well as we are responding companies, okay? So because we were worried about with the traffic being on Ringo Road and the interstate, we're looking at response times to still provide a good level of care, so that's kind of where we are right now. I was over there the other day, and I noticed the firehouse, Chattanooga Firehouse has been demolished over there, so there, there used to be just what, two blocks down, so. Thirteens is out of service, they're responding from Bonnie Oaks at this time. Fifteens is not the first engine over to the city of Ridgeline right now with us. Right now, it's typically thirteen's or fives. Fives coming out of the Highland Park area, thirteen's coming off Brainerd Road. Well, I ask these questions every time their contract come up, I just like to sit down and have a figure, figure it up, what it cost us per trip, you know? So I just don't think this money right here covers our expense.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other discussion?
Just to let the, the council know pursuant to the terms of the contract, if we were to want to renegotiate this contract for higher costs, we have to give at least six months prior to the end of the fiscal year. That means before January first of two thousand twenty-four, we need to give them notice that we are terminating this contract as of July first, or June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. That means we would still provide the services to police and fire to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, and during the next six months, we would negotiate a contract, a new contract between the city and Ridgeline.
Thank you, sir. So we could start looking at this, because we don't have the six-month leeway, leeway now to, to.
The contract automatically renews every year unless we give a six months before the, before the end of the fiscal year, and that would be January first, we would have to give them. So we would have, so if we only have one meeting this month, we would have to terminate the agreement tonight, and let them know that we would provide the service until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, and over the next six months, we would negotiate a new agreement for both police and fire services.
Thank you, sir. All right, I do have a motion currently to approve. Is there any amendment, or? I hear none. We'll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes, resolution three, four, eight, seven, approved. We'll move to item O, resolution number three, four, eight, eight.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council approving an extension deposit agreement between Tennessee American Water and the city of East Ridge for the extension of a water line to the new animal shelter.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller?
Yes, this would be a extension deposit agreement between the Tennessee American Water and East Ridge to extend a new six-inch line from McBride Road to the property line of the East Ridge Animal Shelter, as well as install a fire hydrant at the southwest corner of McBride Road and Stone Street. Estimated cost on this is forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Thank you, sir. Council, I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three, four, eight, eight.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three, four, eight, eight.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Tyler. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes, resolution number three, four, eight, eight, approved. We've already addressed item P, so we'll move to item Q, resolution number three, four, nine, zero.
A resolution of the East Ridge City Council canceling the December two, December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting.
Thank you, sir. This is where we normally, since it's in the calendar and on the schedule, where we actually cancel the second meeting in December, since it falls shortly after the Christmas holiday. So I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three, four, nine, zero.
Motion to approve resolution number three, four, nine, zero.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Haynes and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes, resolution number three, four, nine, zero, approved. That is all the items on the regular agenda, so we'll move to the last item, R, discussion of tentative agenda for now the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four council meeting. Under item three, we'll have our milestone awards for December, so we'll recognize all of our milestone employees that made a milestone service award. Then under old business, we have nothing under old business. Under new business, we have a public hearing for an unnumbered ordinance for Oakdale rezoning from R-one to C-two, commercial. Then immediately after that will be the actual ordinance, which is unnumbered at this point, Oakdale rezoning R-one residential to C-two, commercial, first reading. Stahl?
Good evening, mayor and council. Yeah, this rezone was from an R-one to a C-two commercial district to utilize an accessory building on the site as office space. This would be for Mr. Lee's janitorial service business. They would still use the single-family dwelling as their place of residence. Planning commission did deny this request.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? And I believe we had a large petition.
Very large.
Yes, all right. Thank you, sir. The next item is a public hearing for RT-one zoning classification amendments, followed by the actual ordinance for the RT-one zoning classification amendments. Mr. Stahl?
Yes, mayor and council, city manager Miller and I worked, worked on this diligently. As you know, we've had a lot of RT-ones proposed in the city as of late. These amendments to the Townhome District would amend Section three oh three of the height and area. Proposed changes of this would increase the lot sizes from our thirteen, one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. It would also determine how many units could be built on the lot sizes as well, which would also require the RT-one, if approved, or RT-one zoning, it would have to abut a C-one, a C-two, R-two, and R-three district. We believe the combination of these changes will help decrease the density and also reduce spot zoning in these areas.
Thank you, sir. And I will also mention our planning commission did approve this request.
Yes, sorry.
Any, any questions, council?
I would just like to thank them, Mr. Miller and you, for working on this.
Absolutely. It was some good, good work. All right, if no questions, the next item is an unnumbered ordinance for a budget amendment. Ms. Qualls?
Yes, I'll be moving, we'll be doing the animal shelter, we're gonna use RAPA funds, and so I need to move that expenditure from the Capital Projects Fund to the ARPA, because they do not want the funds mingled in any way, they've had a new ruling. Normally, you would be able to like move the funds as you need them into this fund, but they don't want us to do that at all. They want us to do all the expenditure out of that fund. And then I've made a couple of notes I'll be adding from tonight, so.
Ma'am, any questions? And a little background on the ARPA fund, that's actually the grant that we received that we're gonna utilize.
From the federal government.
The federal government.
They started out that you could only use it for certain things, but we are now able to use it for the animal shelter because of.
That's correct.
The fact it was so small that our employees there, if there was another pandemic, we're not able to, you know, they are too close, and so it's giving them more room, it's giving the animals more room, everybody will be happy.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is an unnumbered resolution approval of Parks and Rec Master Plan. Ms. Qualls?
Yes, mayor and council. City administration is asking for the mayor and council to adopt the draft of the new Parks and Rec Master Plan update, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand thirty-three, composed by city staff and Kim Lee Horning Associates Incorporated. The draft will replace our existing Parks and Rec Master Plan that will end and expire in two thousand twenty-three of this year. The updated master plan will identify the needs and goals for the East Ridge Parks and Recreation Department over the next ten years.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, council? I see none. The next item is an unnumbered resolution, McBride School, approval to conduct assessment on building environmental and structural. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, mayor. I guess we need to determine what the status, what we have, what the future of McBride School is going to be. There are some assessments that I would like to obtain first, and it's kind of goes down to the bottom part of my agenda memorandum. I would recommend the following assessments or studies be made. Number one would be a NESHAP, which stands for the National Emissions Standard for Hazardous Air Pollutants. These are requirements for asbestos assessments. We had a Phase One environmental site assessment completed by S and ME back in two thousand seventeen, although it came out and said that they did not. not find any major environmental conditions or controlled, recognized environmental issues with the subject property. They did have records that they reviewed stating that subject property, which is McBride School, did in fact have asbestos-containing materials in the structure. In the second sentence, they basically said in their summary, they highly recommend that we do a NESHPA assessment. They are required to be done, which we classify as a Phase Two environmental site assessment, prior to any renovation and/or demolition. So if, what if we decide to renovate it, we need to do this study, this assessment. And if we decide to demolish it, we still have to do this assessment. So that's the first thing that needs to be done. And I've contacted S and ME. They did the study back in two thousand seventeen. I'd like to continue our consulting agreement with them. I've asked them to provide me a, a quote. They're in the midst of doing that now. The second one, I'd like to have a walkthrough of the building by an engineer, a structural engineer to ascertain the structural integrity of McBride School. Matt McCarley is a structural engineer. He did a complete assessment of McBride School back in two thousand and twelve. So I've asked him if he would come on board and do a, a review of that, an assessment of McBride School, and give us a report on that. Third, I'd like to ask that an assessment be done through a walkthrough building by a general contractor to be able to provide an estimation of the cost of construction to bring that building to what I call as a functional use, whatever that functional use would be. I do have a, two contractors that would be available to do that. These three assessments could be done in January and see what the results or what the summaries of their assessments come out to be would help us make that determination of what we want to do with McBride School. So I'm asking the council, I don't have specific costs this time. They're in the midst of, of developing those, but if the council gives the blessing to go ahead and do these three assessments at this time, I'll get them done.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions?
Who are the two general contractors?
You're talking about the one that looked at, BP?
Yeah, BP, BP-
BP Construction.
BP Construction. And the other one, I don't, I don't have the name right now. I'll get it to you.
BP Construction was the one that's involved, heavily involved with the actual, there in Utaqua?
Carmen.
Cambridge Square.
Cambridge Square. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none. The next item is an unnumbered resolution to purchase two Ford interceptors for, from the SRO Grant Fund. See, false.
Mayor, Council, with us adding four positions for a school resource officer should the grant, we would like to take some of that money and purchase two vehicles for, at least two of the four. It should come in at the two thousand twenty-three price. The dealer has been very gracious enough to find us two more vehicles that we didn't think we could get, but they have become available, so we can buy those if approved.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions? I see none. That's the last item we have on the tentative agenda. Is any other items of business? I see none. All right. Thanks, everyone, for attending tonight. And I wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This meeting is adjourned.